Hey, good evening, everybody. It, um, feels like we should be turning on our Christmas lights, doesn't it, already?
Some have.
Yeah, we're gonna have the, uh, the tree lighting ceremony here at the Westfield and Lights before long. Um, John Nail from Public Works, are we ready for tonight, okay? We're going, uh, ready to salt, okay, good. So I guess, and Vicki, you're gonna be leaving, 'cause your meeting, you said Channel thirteen is gonna film us putting salt in our trucks, like that's, Fox, I mean, that's a big deal or something? All right, good.
We hope it's not, Mayor.
All right, let's, uh, let's do our pledge of allegiance, and we're very, uh, appreciative to have Pastor Steve Pedego from Eagle Creek Friends Church, way out on our western side, will, will, uh, give us our blessing this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, you are the King of Kings, the Lord of Lords, the everlasting Father, the Prince of Peace. We acknowledge your presence in the history of this city. We acknowledge your presence in the present affairs of what is going on, and we acknowledge your presence here tonight. Bless these leaders in this room, give them the wisdom to move forward in the way that you would have them move. For, Lord God, we acknowledge your presence in what they are doing here. And so, Lord, we just put this time in your hands, and we thank you, Lord, for being with us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. President Ake, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Will the clerk please, uh, note the presence of a quorum?
Here.
Here. Here, thank you.
Here.
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 All right, thank you. At this time, there are no changes to the agenda, as, uh, was updated. Um, and so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes, uh, from October twenty-second, twenty eighteen, and October twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, where we had a special meeting. So, uh, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes from October twenty-second, twenty eighteen.
So moved, second?
Okay, I have a motion by Steve Hoover, and a second by Joe Edwards. Any additions or corrections to the minutes as stated? All right, hearing none, I would ask for approval of the minutes by signifying by saying aye, as stated. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The minutes are approved for October twenty-second. Follow the same procedure for October twenty-ninth, special meeting. Um, I'd entertain a motion to approve those minutes as well.
Move to approve?
Uh, a motion to approve by Bob Horkey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hoover. Any further discussion, additions or corrections to those minutes? I'd entertain a motion, signified by saying aye, if you wish to approve the minutes as stated.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, the minutes stand approved. I've had a chance to review the claims and the claim docket. This time, I'd entertain a motion to approve claims, as stated.
So moved.
Was that Joe?
Yep.
Okay. I have a motion to approve claims, uh, by Joe Edwards, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Bob Horkey. Um, any questions, discussion? All right, hearing none, I'd, uh, consider, uh, approval of claims. So approve claims as stated, signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Claims remain approved, or are approved. At this time, there are no special presentations, so we'll move right into old business. And before us, we have ordinance eighteen seventeen, Lindley Run, PUD, presented by Dane Crabtree. And it is up for adoption consideration tonight.
Good evening, council, for the record, Dane Crabtree with the Economic and Community Development Department. For you this evening is the proposed residential planned unit development known as Lindley Run, which encompasses approximately a hundred and six and a half acres, and is located approximately at the northeast corner of a hundred ninety-first Street and Grassy Branch Road between a hundred ninety-first and a hundred ninety-sixth Streets. The site was introduced to the council on September tenth, received a public hearing at the October first Plan Commission Meeting, followed by unanimous favorable recommendation at the November fifth Plan Commission Meeting, as before each night, for adoption consideration. Since the council introduction, the petitioner has revised the landscape plan, which provides additional information about the plantings, including proposed planting list, as well as a revised concept plan, and revised language to the PUD ordinance, so that a swimming pool with clubhouse and a dog park are required on the real estate. Commitments to the council addressing renting and leasing, as well as overnight parking, have been provided as Exhibit eighteen as well. John Dabushewitz of Nelson and Frankenberger is here this evening to give a brief presentation, after which he will be available for questions, and I will be available if there are questions of staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Dane.
Good evening, council members, uh, for the record, John Dabushewitz, Land Use Professional with the law firm in Nelson and Frankenberger. We represent the petitioner, Oltoff Homes. Uh, present tonight is Jeff Pape of Oltoff Homes, Jim Schenover, attorney with our office, and other members of our development team. Uh, this exhibit that's on display currently is the updated concept plan layout for the Lindley Run neighborhood. The zoning map amendment requests approval to rezone the property to a planned unit development with SF four and SFA as the underlying zoning classifications. As proposed, Lindley Run will incorporate a diverse mix of residential home offerings within three districts. As Dane indicated, this is the landscaping plan that's included as Exhibit F to the PUD, and was reviewed by the Plan Commission at their last meeting. Uh, the unique landscaping plan includes specifically positioned native plantings and a four-board detailed fence along the site perimeters uh, of the exterior perimeter streets, that being a hundred ninety-sixth Street, Grassy Branch, and a hundred ninety-first. Enhanced setbacks and open spaces also proposed along the perimeter of the site where adjacent to existing homes. Uh, to that end, the updated plans address requests made by the Johnsons. The Johnsons are adjacent owner to the north and to the east. Uh, the Johnsons parcel sits right here on the south side of a hundred ninety-sixth Street. The city is in receipt of a letter from the Johnsons, which is attached to your agenda this evening, uh, and was provided also to the Plan Commission, expressing their support of the revised plan. So after the initial public hearing back on October first, we've met again with the Johnsons, addressed their concerns, attached those items to the ordinance, and reached an agreement with them, whereby they're now in support of the requests that's before you this evening. Additional individual lot landscaping and building landscaping standards are provided within the exhibits of the PUD as well. The council and Plan Commission requested that the applicant give consideration to providing additional amenities. Regarding amenities, both passive and active amenities that are provided within the development, the amenity area has been centrally located within the neighborhood. Council members to your left and on the screen, the amenity area is located right here, again positioned between Area B and A of the development and Area C, and again centrally located. A network of paths and sidewalks is located throughout the site, and has been enhanced additionally with additional path segments. Those additional path segments, again, council members to your left, are, are located at the terminus of this cul-de-sac, down south and east, over to the half-acre dog park that Dane mentioned, as well as additional, uh, segments of path located here, and up to the, uh, amenity path, as well as a connection here to Crossroads Church. You don't see the Crossroads Church site on the, but the, this path connects Crossroads Church, and another connection here to a path in the adjacent Schofield neighborhood. Additionally, along our north perimeter and west-east perimeter of Area C, there's a pathway segment, this used to be a sidewalk, and they converted it into a path along the western edge of the pond, down to the amenity area, so there was a path connection from north to south, which attached to the Schofield paths, and then there's path, um, you'll see through the church that are south and east on the south side of a hundred ninety-first Street, um, that enters the Aurora neighborhood, and then gets you all the way down to State Road thirty-two. This is a blow-up of Area C. Um, you can see again the, uh, centrally located amenity area, located here, and then pick up the path a little better over to Crossroads Church. Amenities originally included, uh, as shown here, a large picnic shelter, a community fire pit, fitness trail, including multiple fitness stations, and a large playground. This is a blow-up of the amenity facility proposed for the development. The overall amenity package has been enhanced, as indicated by staff, and now includes the addition of a fifteen-hundred square foot community clubhouse. This is more than just a bathhouse, uh, for the community. Fifteen-hundred square feet would include meeting space and a, a kitchenette for the use by the neighborhood, uh, community, uh, as well as a community swimming pool, uh, and parking area, as shown on the, uh, attached rendering. Additionally, again, as Dane indicated, uh, when we were at Plan Commission, one of the Plan Commission members had requested some additional consideration give, given to, uh, folks that would have, uh, dogs. There's, uh, subsequently been added a half-acre minimum in size and area, dog park located here, and then the additional trails, which get people over to that, uh, dog park within the neighborhood. This last exhibit, uh, just helps illustrate the, uh, all the internal and external paths within the development. Again, there's, uh, asphalt path along a hundred ninety-sixth, the ground Grassy Branch, coming into the site to the amenity facility, this is the fitness trail that's located here. And then all in red are additional pathways, we connect over to Schofield. Schofield's path comes to the south and crosses a hundred ninety-first Street. Um, the area that you see, or the lines that you see highlighted in blue, those are all the additional five-foot sidewalks that run throughout the development. In conclusion, Oltoff has worked with staff to address the comments we received, uh, which are now addressed and included in the PUD ordinance. At their meeting on November fifth, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward the ordinance back to the City Council with a favorable recommendation for approval. Additionally, as requested, consideration has been given to restricting homes in the neighborhood from, from becoming for rent, and limiting overnight on-street parking. Uh, these two items are addressed in written commitments made by the applicant to the City Council, which will be effective with the adoption of the PUD ordinance. This evening, we're respectfully requesting adoption consideration, and approval of the Lindley Run PUD ordinance recommended by the Plan Commission, subject to the provided commitments. With that, I'll conclude, and we'll be able to address any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? I'd just like to say what a fine job that Oltoff has done in working through the process, our processes, and listening to what the council comments were at the introduction, and then following that through with added input from our APC. So I think they've been, uh, I'm excited about the project personally, and, uh, um, you, the process worked the way it should, and the, uh, contribution to the city in, in trying to accommodate some of our needs was well met and well done.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the petitioner?
The legal drain that, uh, Joe Roberts talked about, where, where is that now running, or where will that work, run when it's done?
When it, when it's done, it'll run in an easement that runs along our north perimeter into this pond, and then south back into a reconstructed legal drain, which will exist along the south perimeter of the Johnson parcel, before it gets picked up within, you can see all this earthwork that did over here, picks back up within Schofield and continues east.
Anyone else?
I would just likewise, uh, as Jim said, I'd like to thank the petitioner for working with the council and the APC and the neighbors, uh, to make this a, uh, very diverse project, and, uh, very well landscaped and connected project with trails, so thank you.
Anything more? Thank you, John. This time, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance eighteen dash seventeen, Lindley Run, PUD.
I have a sec.
I'll second.
I have a second. I have a motion by Steve Hoover, and a second by, uh, Chuck Lehman. Any further discussion? All right, will the clerk please call poll council?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
All right, uh, the next item of business under Old Business is ordinance eighteen dash thirty-seven. We had a council introduction on the twenty-fourth, and it is up for adoption consideration tonight. Uh, Cindy Gosser is, uh, presenting. Thank you. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance eighteen thirty-seven, City of Westfield Transferring Funds.
I have a motion by Bob Horkey, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Joe Edwards. Uh, counselors, any discussion?
Just my quick note that this doesn't really affect any financing, it's just a fund combination and elimination.
Uh, it's just a, yeah, you're right. It's just a consolidation, it makes things simpler. Uh, hearing no further discussion, um, do you have a motion before us? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. And the next item for business is ordinance eighteen dash forty, the Grand Junction Plaza, PUD, Mr. Matt Skelton is presenting, and this is up for adoption tonight.
Good evening, members of the council, uh, ordinance eighteen forty before you this evening, uh, last appeared before you on the, uh, tenth of September. Since then, it's been to the Plan Commission for public hearing and, uh, recommendation, and it received a unanimous favorable recommendation. Uh, as you'll recall, this is for a twelve-point-five acre area, uh, including the Grand Junction Plaza. The ordinance establishes a framework for, a zoning framework for the, the plaza, and lays the groundwork for some plating work that we need to get completed. Uh, this, since it was before you, there have been some modifications to the land uses, uh, further restrictions, um, of the uses, primarily eliminating special exception uses, so it's clear that any changes to those uses would go to the Plan Commission and not to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And then, secondly, there was some additional information regarding lighting that was incorporated into the ordinance, which doesn't change the lighting, it just gives more definition. And it's ready for your consideration this evening.
All right, thank you, Matt. Does council have any questions for?
I have one.
Yeah?
I was just wondering, Matt, can you kind of give me an idea of what a commercial recreational facility would be in this regard?
I can, I'll have to, I'd have to read the definition out of the UDO, and I do not have the UDO in front of me.
That was one thing I was questioning, just because...
It's defi, it's a defined term.
Yeah. And I'm just wondering, I mean, with this being public and having a commercial, you know, opportunity like that, I know it's still LBH, and there's those other uses, but, um, just wondering the extent of what that might be.
Yeah, I, uh, with a little notice, I could have had that definition in front of me to respond to your question.
Didn't think about it till right now.
I understand, I'm, I just...
I was, I was happy to get the special exception uses out.
But I, it, it, the, the good news is, you own the real estate, and if there's a use that you don't want to use it for, then don't use it for that.
So that's the safeguard built into this?
It's unlike any other project, other than Grand Park, I guess.
Matt, the, the brown area, is that simply flood plain back in there?
It, it is, that, almost that entire area, um, uh, is the regional water retention facility that's been constructed. And so it's, it's already done, I don't think that there's a lot of changes to that area anticipated.
But it's possible with a huge rain, it could fill up?
It has. It has.
I've seen it.
So it's working?
Yes. It's working, yeah. The ten-year flood that we're supposed to get every ten years, I think we've had four, and at least four of them.
We could have the other problems, though.
That's true.
All right, very good. Any other questions, staff? I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the Grand Junction Plaza, PUD, is there, from Joe Edwards, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think, uh, Mr. Horkey rang in first. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please poll council?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. Uh, the next, one, two, three, four items, uh, Matt Skelton is presenting, and we'll take them all together, but we will vote, the fiscal plan must be approved first before the voluntary annexation. And so these deal with two of those, and Matt, uh, you're free to go ahead.
All right. I'll, I'll flash these, uh, location maps up individually, but I'll speak to the both of them. Um, the first item, uh, eighteen forty-one, that is accompanied by Resolution eighteen one-one-three, is for the area on the southeast corner here of Grassy Branch and thirty-eight. Uh, you've seen this before, this is a one-hundred percent voluntary annexation part of the North Point, uh, project. Uh, and, let's see here. I thought I had the acreage right here, but, no, thirty-two acres. And then this one is the northwest corner of Grassy Branch and a hundred ninety-sixth Street, approximately eighty-two acres, also part of the North Point, uh, project, one-hundred percent voluntary annexation. So the, the last two items there on your, uh, agenda, Resolution eighteen fourteen, is the fiscal plan that accompanies the annexation ordinance eighteen forty-seven. And there's any, well, we haven't received any comments or anything about this, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to respond.
All right, any questions for staff? Okay. Looking at, uh, uh, Resolution eighteen dash one thirteen, fiscal plan for annexation ordinance eighteen dash forty, forty-one, uh, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, this is Bob Horkey. Second?
Second.
Joe Edwards, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call poll council? Dash one thirteen. Yeah. Yes.
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 Okay. And like unto it is ordinance eighteen, uh, dash forty-one, the hundred percent voluntary annexation, phase one. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve ordinance eighteen dash forty-one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Steve Hoover, and a second by Mr. Horkey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please poll council?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. And then we have phase two, we need to approve the fiscal plan first, that's Resolution eighteen dash one fourteen. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
I have a motion by Cindy Spuljarek.
Second.
I have a second by Steve Hoover. Any further discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please poll council?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. And the, uh, ordinance eighteen dash forty-seven, um, hundred percent voluntary annexation. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve ordinance eighteen forty-seven, the one hundred percent voluntary annexation of North Point, Phase Two.
Thank you, Bob, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Bob Horkey, and a second by Miss Spuljarek. Um, any further discussion? All right, Cindy, please poll council.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, thank you. And we come to the last item under Old Business, which is ordinance eighteen dash fifty. Uh, amending ordinance eleven dash sixteen, operations of golf carts within the city. Uh, Mr. John Nail is presenting tonight. Welcome, Mr. Nail.
Thank you. John Nail, City Engineer, City of Westfield. Uh, this is an ordinance that was introduced, uh, on October, uh, twenty-second by Jeremy Lawler. Uh, Jeremy's not able to be with us tonight, he wisely recalled that it was his Mrs. Law, Mrs. Lawler's birthday, so, uh, I think that's a good decision to hand it off to me tonight. Um, this is an ordinance to revise, uh, our allowance of golf carts on perimeter trails and named trails. Uh, before, we did not allow golf carts on either. Uh, this ordinance would revise that to allow, uh, golf carts on perimeter trails and designated named trails. Um, this is followed with a, uh, signing package that we will, uh, be putting out, uh, as soon as this is, uh, approved. And, uh, since the introduction, I have received no comments from citizens at this time. I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. Any, any questions for Mr. Nail?
I, I do have a question, where is the, under the section? Hang on, I just lost it here. Section eight, there was be, it's supposed to be an attachment?
Yeah, the, uh, if you go to...
Diagram?
Uh, it would be, so the, the attachment is that, is not there, but the golf cart signage and phase one map, phase one map would be the attachment A. Yeah, click on that. Mm-hmm. So this is just illustrating, um, the route, the designated route, uh, just east of Cary Road on a hundred sixty-first Street, uh, going west to Cary Road, up to Cary, up, north on Cary Road to the Midland Trace, and then west to our downtown area. I believe the intention is that that is Exhibit A.
Pardon me?
I believe the intention is that that is Exhibit A.
Got it.
That same section, I, I don't know if it's an issue, um, I know the intent, but it says without prior written permission from the Westfield Parks Director. We don't really have a Parks Director anymore. So would it be better to amend that to say the Public Works Director?
I believe...
Legal, right. Sure. I ran this by Jeremy, he, he liked the, uh, language, he has somebody in his department that's head of parks, and he doesn't want to be the person in front of this, so it'll probably fall in that area. We can change the language once he has, uh, determined a title for that person, but right now, the duties are outlined as a Parks Director, or Parks Manager.
All right. That was a long, uh, answer for a simple question. So we're good the way it is? Okay. Okay.
Give us just a minute here, okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Where, where did this red line come from?
That's not on mine.
I know, I just, it just popped up, like...
I, I believe the red line was on the previous ordinance, and it was just, uh, it...
Oh, you're looking at ordinance...
Yeah, if you go to eleven sixteen.
You're looking at the real old one.
If you go to section eight of that, I believe someone, uh, I think Jeremy added a red line to the PDF. If you scroll down.
This one?
Yeah, so it was just to help illustrate what has changed from the previous ordinance.
That was presented when we first presented this ordinance, so you had the change that was anticipated before the new one was brought before the council.
Alright.
But this does allow carts on these designated trails, right?
On designated named trails, correct.
Anyone else? I entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve the ordinance eighteen dash fifty.
Steve Hoover do that.
Okay, okay. I have a motion by Steve Hoover. Mr. Horkey, are you seconding?
Sure, I'll second Mr. Hoover's motion.
Alright, very good. Alright, any further discussion among council?
I would just comment that this is something I've questioned, whether this is the right thing to do, but we've had a lot of requests for this, and to me, this is kind of a trial. If this works out well, then this will likely get in the future extended to other neighborhoods. But we gotta try it, I guess, to know whether it works or not, and if it doesn't work out, we'll come back and change it back to the way it was.
I've got the same concerns as Steve, I have heard from a few trail users that are worried about the safety, you know, for pedestrians and bikes especially, so this trial is gonna be pretty important, see how that goes.
Again, thinking that's why there was such a hesitancy for one of us to jump in and have moved to do this, because kind of share that myself a little bit, but I think it's worth a try.
The process involved the police and, and safety folks looking at this and trying to determine the best and safest routes to downtown. And as we looked at being a pedestrian, more outdoor trail-using community, I agree that it's, it's worth, worth the trial, and we can adjust as we go along, but I think it enhances excuse me. It enhances, uh, it'll enhance the, the usability of downtown, eliminate, uh, it could in some cases eliminate, um, car traffic and volume and create a, a really neat amenity to our city, so we'll see where it goes. Alright, we have a motion before us.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
President. I've struggled with this for, for quite some time and, and thought about it, and I believe that we have, first of all, we don't have a, you know, an ocean and mountains and all, all the other things. And we have invested years and many, many dollars creating this trail system, and I, I just, man, I, I just can't support it. I just think that those trails are just a huge, huge asset, and that this would be just borderline abuse, so that's my opinion, and I'm sticking with it.
Very good. Anyone else? Alright.
I just ask a question, how much use is there now of this thing? I mean, is there, are there thirty carts running around, or how, how many are going around now?
I don't have an exact number, but I do know that all of the golf carts are, are inspected and, and have a permit from, I believe, our police department.
Joel, do you know how many carts we have licensed? It would be just in the probably to be possible to get on here. I mean, if it's not, if it's not if it's not hundreds, it wouldn't make much difference, but if it's like it's only twenty, why, I've not seen any, really, but I can see what Chuck's saying.
That's a good thing, they're, they're following our ordinance currently.
You shouldn't have seen any on these trails that are highlighted here, or they would have been in violation.
Well, there was a yellow Jeep sighting a couple of weeks ago, and I won't talk about that.
Maybe that's why I didn't see it.
Oh, that was a special trip, okay.
So that just means we have law-abiding citizens in this community, so that's good.
We have an awful lot down by Bridgewater, Boatside area, so, a lot.
We ought to give it a try and see if it works, if it doesn't work, if they're running over people and, you know, stuff like that, then it's time to cut it off. Which would probably be even harder than
We've done hard things before, though.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, li- lady and gentlemen, we have a motion before us, so any further comment before I end discussion? Alright, we'll call for the vote then, Cindy.
Yes.
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 No.
Alright, thank you. Now we enter the area of new business, and we have one ordinance before us, and this is a council introduction tonight. So Ms. Pam Howard will be presenting Chatham Hills PUD Amendment Five.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Pam Howard with the Economic and Community Development Department. Before you this evening, for an introduction, I have an amendment to incorporate an additional sixty-eight acres into the Chatham Hills PUD. This property is generally located at the northeast corner of one hundred and ninety-ninth Street and Horton Road, and would be incorporated into District One, residential district of the existing Chatham Hills PUD. The amendment also includes standards pertaining to the annexation of one parcel. Tishner is here, they do not plan to present, but are available for questions, as am I, if you have any of staff, thank you.
Does council have any questions about the introduction?
Are they requesting a change in the total number of units maximum on here with this?
No.
No, okay.
Anyone else? Alright, hearing no further comments, this will move on to the APC, which they'll have a public hearing on this December third. Alright, so that concludes our normal business for the evening. At this time, if any presidents would wish to address council on items not on the agenda, you may do so at the present time. Anybody like to address council? Alright, seeing none. Do we have a report from APC, Mr. Hoover?
I do, APC met last Monday evening, and we approved a citizens, a detailed development plan for citizens' new water tower at on a hundred and ninety-third street. We sent a Lindley Run PUD and the Grand Junction Plaza PUD to this body with a favorable recommendation. We held public hearings on the development plan and secondary plat for North Point Phase Two and North Point Phase Three. We did the same development plan, site plan for the lakes at Shady Nook, section three C, that was approved with no public comment. The Bordeaux Walk PUD held a public hearing, we did have a couple of people speak at that. And also a public hearing for that same project, Bordeaux Walk, for site plan and overall, overall development plan. That was it.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any other council comments? I'd just like to weigh in, today's Veterans Day, and I'd like everybody to remember the service that was given to our country by these folks, and they're still serving today, is, if there are any veterans in the audience, I'd like to recognize you at this time, so please stand up. Alright. Do any family members have somebody servicing current, servicing the country currently? You do. Thank you. We appreciate all the sacrifice, and I think we should all pause and remember those that give us the ability to have a session like this and give us our freedom and protect us. It's a great country we have, and it was great to see what happened last Tuesday at the election polls, we didn't have any hanging chads, or we didn't have any fisticuffs that I'm aware of, and we had a civil election. And to those that won, congratulations, I don't know if anybody ran that's out there in the audience today, but we appreciate everybody's coming to the polls, the turnout was heavier than we'd had in recent years, but it's still not where it should be, so we're grateful we have the ability to do that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Yeah, it was a, it was a huge turnout, the, this was one of the voting sites, and I guess it was very popular. I know it took forty-five minutes the day I voted to get through here, so. We haven't seen that turnout, I don't know then, it's wonderful. Out at Grand Park, we just finished the, the two weekends of the Big Ten soccer championships, the women were the weekend, a week ago, men were just finished up yesterday. We couldn't have asked for a better combination for yesterday, and that we had Indiana and Michigan playing, two close states, we had standing room only for the final game on Sunday. IU won three to oh, if you didn't see that, that was good, ranked number two in the country. But once again, William and Angie Smitherman and all of, his staff, the Westfield welcome staff just put on a phenomenal presentation, the Big Ten was, was, was very pleased with the whole operation, and it was
They're gonna be back in here.
Well, we're going to see if we can't maybe do a little longer-term deal with them, but we also we had a little ceremony before we started for veterans, and then at halftime, we had a ceremony to honor one of our own, Mr. Bruce Carlstedt, if any of you know Bruce, who's been in the soccer world here in Westfield since the, since the nineteen seventies, when he was instrumental in beginning our recreational soccer, has a list of honors a mile long, and it was, he, he's still out there, he still plays, he still coaches, I believe, but he also trains referees. And we, his whole, he had a whole contingent of his family there, and, and we were able to dedicate to him and his name, the recreational fields out at Grand Park will be known as the Bruce Carlstad Recreational Fields, so it was it was, it was fun, and it was great to see all his family. Tomorrow, ten AM, we will be breaking ground on a long-awaited project, speaking of trails, with the Monon Trail. Now that we have it all completed from Indianapolis to Sheridan, tomorrow we'll start construction on the long-awaited thirty-two bridge, which will be not only a huge safety piece, but also, pardon me, a, really a landmark. The, the bridge is quite long because it extends to the north, where it will also go over Tournament Trail, so when you're up on top of thirty-one and traveling through town and you look west, I think it'll be a very, very impressive sight. And I just might add, and, and we'll get some more public information out on this, but this trail crossings thing, of course, is always such a, a topic of discussion, now that we have so many trails and, and crossing our streets. We do have a, a prioritized program of, of addressing the, the growing congestion that we have and the concerns for safety at these crossings. The first thing we did after, we, we did some experimenting, if you remember, on a hundred and sixty-first street, where we tried putting up the signs where traffic, auto traffic must stop if there's somebody in the crosswalk. That met with a lot of mixed reactions. We had some gates at some of our crossings, we had some bollards, and we just, we've tried a lot of different things, and what we've come up with is a very consistent program of trail, all trail users will stop for the automobiles, traffic. As announced by stop ahead sign and a stop sign on the trail, and a white stop bar across the trail. So that is consistent, I think, now in all locations throughout the city, so we don't have that confusion. One of the most dangerous things we have is a car stopping to be helpful and to allow others to pass, and if one does, one doesn't. So certainly, what the culture we want to deliver there, develop is cars definitely need to slow down and watch for those irresponsible to stopping, young kids and so on, but traffic should keep moving at these crossings, and then, just as we have done with thirty-two, we will prioritize the crossings that need, the next level of protection would be a separation between the grades, and needless to say, that is very expensive. The Monon Bridge at thirty-two is about five million dollars total. We do have a plan for the next priority is a hundred and sixty-first in the Monon, where ultimately, but this is gonna be three, four, five years down the road, we will separate that with a bridge or a tunnel. But in the meantime, we can also, we're in the process, have to have some land acquisition of building a mini roundabout, I guess for lack of a better term, I don't know what you engineers would call it, John, but pedestrian refuge, so it would be a small island to encourage autos to slow down and give crossers a, a safe place halfway, so we're gonna do that, I think, in the next year out there. And then, as these locations evolve, we'll, we'll continue as we have the funds to do so. A week ago tonight, your my chief of staff and I had a, a very unusual opportunity in that we were invited to eat dinner at a very formal setting with the Japanese Council General Naoki Aito in his home and residence office in Chicago. And this came about, Todd attended a Japanese-American conference in Omaha a month or two ago, and our governor was the keynote speaker. He addressed, in his address, he recognized Todd and Westfield and Grand Park in his talk. And as a result, the council general engaged Todd in a conversation that he would like to talk more to Westfield about engaging in some kind of sports, perhaps competition with his country and us here at Grand Park, especially as Japan hosts the, the upcoming, I think the next round of the Summer Olympics, I'm not sure exactly if that's two years out or four years out, but they are already talking about it. So we had dinner at the council general's home, if any of you would like any more details on my culinary experience, I'll be glad to go over it with you one by one. I will only say that as we sat down to this formally set table, there was not a knife, fork, or spoon to be found. And I have never picked up a set of chopsticks in my life. It was a challenge, but it was, it was a great meeting, the council general is going to visit Grand Park sometime, he wanted to come this winter, we're gonna try to get him to come here in the spring. And we have some activity going on, the place looks a little better rather than white, so it was, it was very interesting because because they're also, of course, were interested in, in business investment. There are, Indiana has, I think, over sixty-five thousand people employed by three hundred and some different Japanese entities here in Indiana, so the Japanese are very interested in Indiana, and with our addition of the Toyota facility up at North Point, we're kind of on their target. So, we'll see what we can do with all that.
We're glad you, you survived the food experience. And you now know how to use the chopsticks.
Yes.
So it was an educational experience. All right. All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. You have a second? Got a second from Bob Horkey, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, we stand adjourned, and thank you.